In the spirit of respect, authenticity and reconciliation, the Town of Slave Lake honors and acknowledges that we are situated on the traditional lands of Sarge First Nation within Treaty Territory. Home to Indigenous, Métis and Inuit peoples who have occupied these lands since time immemorial. Counselor Hughes?
Uh, yes, I would like to add a closed session tonight, please, under ATIA Section 19.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to add the closed session after State of the Lake. Any further discussion? Call to question those in favor. And that one is carried. Counselor Grammick?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Call to question those in favor. And that one is also carried. Okay, we'll move right into our delegations. We have a bunch of budget discussions, so. I'll invite you to take the floor, introduce yourself. Presentations are to be 10 minutes and a reminder to counsel that. You can ask questions during the presentation as you choose. Just make sure you hit your. Button request and we'll go from there. Josh, the floor is yours.
Thank you Frankie. All right, so we have kind of a, this is not a, not a formal proposal. What this is, is an idea in the works to become a proposal. We're approaching multiple municipalities and governing bodies to see if their interest in this proposal and see if they want to contribute and possibly in the future, look into. Moving forward with, with this proposal. So it's an Economic Development Support Service proposal that Community Futures is bringing forward. We, the reason we bring this, this proposal or this idea forward is we've recognized a challenge in the region that Community Futures represents. With economic development, keeping an economic development officer as, or staff, as well as keeping continuity within the economic development services. It's been a major challenge, not, not just for the Town of Slave Lake, but almost every municipality in this region. And we recognize that. There, there are some challenges that an alone municipality can't face. That, that we need to help share in the responsibility of economic development for the region because we all depend on each other. For the growth and development of this region. And we recognize as well as that. Some of the problems stem from, from keeping economic development officers is the competition in the market. To keeping a qualified individual here, as well as the, the breadth of challenges that they face and the breadth of. Initiatives that they're responsible for, for this region. So what our proposal is, or what we're bringing forward to is an idea that we have one shared economic development officer between. Multiple municipalities and support staff. And that person would be working with each individual municipality on their initiatives and projects, as well as. Proposing shared projects depending on each municipality's needs. So they, there would only be shared projects when needed or when. When municipalities agree to having a shared project. The idea is to share that position so we could lower costs of having that individual hired for that position. As well as then we can also use a portion of funds for each municipality that set aside for their own projects. And hopefully that we could use that, those funds to help get matching or more funds to grow the pool that, that each municipality could work with. We see a lot of benefits with that, with that collaboration. The one challenge is that we've, we've seen collaborations before in the economic development realm for this area, including the Rita. And one problem that we found is that there's always this weightiness towards one end of the lake or the other end of the lake, or certain municipalities not being able to collaborate well. We feel that Community Futures being a stationed economic development. Agency for 38 years within the region has shown that there's a lot of stability with our organization and ability to work across the lake and across multiple municipalities at the same time. To help mitigate those issues in the future. Now again, this project is just an idea at this point. What we're looking for is input from municipalities to see, one, if they're even interested. Secondly, to see if the numbers align because our office has not hired an ECTV officer before. We've worked in the realm, but we've not hired ones. So municipalities have, and we'd love to see like what challenges they faced. And what things that maybe we need to address in our project planning for this, as well as any challenges you see with, with this project, project or this proposal. And that's what we're looking for today. Not, no commitment, just an idea of, is this something that interests you? Is this something you could collaborate with us just even to work out the plan? And, and then moving from there forward, then we can see where we could go with this. I did not scroll through, sorry you guys. So some of the, I can go through some of the concepts of the plan. The idea right now we've been talking about is, I'm just going to skip by that. Is basically to go through. The idea is we want at least three municipalities signing up to this project if, when we do move forward with it. We, we had the previous, the original thought was about $40,000 commitment for operational funds from each municipality. That number may change depending on the consultations that we have with municipalities and what they believe is, is more feasible. And then secondly, we were asking also for a $40,000 commitment per year per municipality. For their projects, meaning that the money doesn't go to operations, it's just set aside for their own projects. And so that we would not be combining that funds with any other municipality, specifically for that municipality to choose what they wish to do with it. The, the idea is we're looking for a three-year commitment in this proposal or this idea so that we can create some longevity and. You can't see results of economic development work within one year, it's just impossible. So we would need at least three years, we think, to create some real results that would support the municipality or the community. Some of the programs, just to give you guys some background that we have been working on in the economic development realm that have gone really well. That you're probably familiar with is our, we did an NRED program, which is an economic development project we did just this last year. It went off really well. We beat every metric that we needed to. And it brought about $62,000 into the community to support that, that initiative. The Youth Employment Program, the Yes You Program, we call it. And that brought about $900,000 into the community and it continues to do so until 2028. We have the Learning Indigenous Financial Teachings, the LIFT program, brought in about 519,000. In training supports and services for this region and that will continue for another year. Hopefully we'll, we're going to apply again. Opening Multicultural Narratives Initiative, that's the Omni Project, that brought in 45,000 towards another project crew in this area. And that was just last year. And the Possibilities and Opportunities Program brought another $90,000 in training and entrepreneurial supports in the region on last year. Our, our track record for applying for grants and getting them, as well as achieving the goals is. Near spot on. We've been very fortunate to have an excellent team to run the projects through the last few years. And we've, we've had a lot of success with our applications. Which is, just goes to show that we have the ability to make sure that we can get the funds and get recognition for our reason, region in the economic development initiatives. Some of the structure that we're looking at to run the program itself is we're hoping that. Each municipality would elect a committee, either from counselors or from staff, doesn't matter, it's whatever the municipality wants. That would direct us on what initiatives they're interested in pursuing and what is important to them. And they would make the financial or the decisions on what projects we would pursue on behalf of that municipality. We would have a secondary committee that would focus on the regional needs. This committee wouldn't have any authority to make decisions on what projects they're pursuing, but it would allow those municipalities to collaborate together. On projects and to discuss things together to see if there is synergies. We were discussing this with the MD of Lester Slave River and the County of Big Lakes, and they believe also ANSA plays a huge role in this, in this. Area where maybe that's where our collaboration committee could come from or come out of. So there, there might not need, be need for that secondary committee. Again, this is just a proposal for ideas. Governance, some of the other things that we wanted to make sure that there was proper reporting and reporting was consistent. So we would create a, a structure or a framework for municipality and their needs. For reporting to ensure that they would get all the data they need. To make sure that they're feeling comfortable with what's happening and what projects are moving forward, how the money is being spent. Et cetera, et cetera. And our organization is actually very good at providing reports for the activities that we do where. We were audited every year from the government of Canada and we're very successful in those audits. So yeah. Otherwise, maybe I'll just leave it open for questions for the last couple of minutes.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. I know that's a lot to, there. I'll throw that to counsel to see if anyone has questions at this time. Counselor Hughes?
Agent Josh, I'm just curious, has this exact model been done before? With sharing an ECTV officer of this kind of scale?
Don't, not exactly. The, so Tri-Council did try and do something similar to this project, but it was. It was a little bit different of a setup. So it wasn't like an outside organization running the ECTV. It was the ECTV was hired for the Tri-Council to run when they had the money from the fire. There was some successes and there were some challenges, definitely. And that is definitely somewhere where I, I, we pulled some lessons learned. Cause Community Futures in the last couple of years of the Tri-Council ECTV section, we helped do some administration for them under contract. So we did reckon, we did pull some good things out of that, but, but there were definitely other challenges there. That is only reference that I know of. I don't have much history on the Rita itself, as it was, it was, it was, it was kind of sketchy by the end. And I didn't have any chance to really understand how it worked.
Okay, gotcha. And sorry, you said right now you're approaching Big Lakes, MD 124 and the Town of Slave Lake.
Yes, we'll also be reaching out to the MD of Opportunity. We, we're waiting for a delegation, Town of High Prairie and.
So essentially this would morph into possibly the same boundary as the current ANCA. Is that like the ideal? Path forward, kind of?
Yes, and, and there, there's a very big reason why. It's the ANCA's boundaries are almost exactly the same as my Community Futures Office's boundaries. So it works well within a realm for us to collaborate, work together and, and have the same region.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, this actually reminds me, it's obviously very similar to what the tourism group is doing, that kind of regional expansion that we're currently kind of. Undergoing as well, and it's the same boundary as well. So I do see this as a very similar opportunity to kind of get all those people in a room and sort of focus in on. Particular things. The one thing I would be worried about with this is obviously just people's visions in their own municipalities or nations being. They're solely theirs, right? And understanding what that's going to look like to collaborate, but it sounds like you've got. A good, a good situation figured out there to kind of get things started. I know just personally speaking from around the table, lots of people can have a lot of different ideas. So it's a good to have a plan to kind of figure out how you're going to handle that moving forward. But all in all, I do really like the idea. I think there's definitely some value here. Economic development is obviously super important. Our region needs to be doing it. And yeah, I, I'm definitely interested in learning more here.
Thank you, Kim. Yeah.
Counselor Choba?
Thank you, Josh, for a wonderful presentation. My first question is the $80,000 a year contribution that you talked about, how was that calculated? Like, how did you come about that?
So Andrew, we were, we were just basing on some baseline wages that we have, we had an understanding about, of course, in the last few years that will have changed. So the 40,000, one portion, the 40,000 contributions to projects, it just, it's a baseline amount that we can utilize. As, as contribution from the town or from that municipality to, into projects. So whenever you're applying for grants or other funds. They always want to make sure that you have some skin in the game and it's really important to show that. So that would be the skin in the game for whatever. Programs or projects that we're working on so that we can expand those funds and find other opportunities to grow the opportunity. The operational side, that was just based again, just on wages and I, kind of an idea of what the operations would be. I've been already told by the County of Big Lakes that may have to shift a bit because economic development officers are really hard to come by, especially. Really well-qualified ones. So that idea, that amount may have to shift, but again, these numbers are pretty open for interpretation. We're not, I'm not necessarily looking for specific amounts at this time. I just wanted to present something that would be reasonable or within reason.
And. You talked about a three-year partnership, right? And what if, what if that partnership becomes misaligned? Like what are the withdrawal clauses for municipalities?
And that's, again, that is something that I would want to discuss with the municipalities interested in the project. So if they gave me a letter of interest saying, hey, we are interested. Then I would collaborate and say, what could this contract look like so that we're making sure that the project is sustainable? So that we can make sure that we're achieving the goals that the municipality needs and that there's, there's the least amount of risk possible. We would build that into whatever that proposal would be in the end. And again, when we're building that, I want to build this with the municipalities. I don't want to build fully something come to you guys. I want to kind of have an idea of your needs, your concerns. And we would build that together before moving forward.
Counselor Grammick?
Thank you for the report. I know it's just kind of preliminary, but I have a couple of comments or suggestions or you can tell me if I'm out to lunch too.
No, no.
But how many partners do you need to make it work? Hypothetically, we're in, but no one else is, it doesn't work, right?
Correct. So we would, we're looking for at least three partners.
Like, so two couldn't work either? There has to be three?
It could, it could be two, it could be. So again, it just depends. Our idea is we wanted to make sure that the costs were reduced as much as possible for each municipality. And based on the sizes of our municipalities and the types of projects that we're able to take on, we believe we could do three efficiently. With, with one EDO. The, the thing is though, if, and I should explain kind of how the EDO position worked, they would not be running the projects. We would be hiring people to run the project, individual projects. They would be coordinating and managing the economic development services for the region. So. They wouldn't be doing all the work. That's not, that wouldn't be the realm. So. We feel that, that about three would be efficient. We could make it work with two, depending on how much people, how much the municipality was willing to put in to cover the costs of the. Of that, these services.
I asked that kind of too, because the ANSA idea, it's good on paper and that's a great committee and hey, you're going to. Lobby for a chemo thing. So what, we're going to put ours on the side and we'll lobby for High Prairie to get that rather than us. So we weren't all. Kind of lobbying and spending money and time in the same spots. For me, just me, when you talk about the economic development approach, there's probably a role to play there. But let's pretend we're going with an oil play because that's what I know. As much as we like our neighbors, we want the big oil company to build something in Slave Lake, not High Prairie or, or whatever. So as the broad approach with economic development, I'd, I'd personally want to see it a smaller circle of like RMD and the Saw Ridge or something, right? So it's, it's right in our backyard and there's not more control, but like not spreading around the economic development where we're hoping to get that, but someone. 500 kilometers away gets it instead. But I still think you should approach ANSA because there still might be a, a different role or angle that I'm missing with that one. But from the. That approach, I'd, I'd be interested in a model of this kind of in our own Tri-Council thing or something like that. It's not just. Early discussions and stuff, but that's, that's my thought on it.
Yeah, and it's, it's a valid argument that you would, you, we could possibly have competing communities, right? Like we're all together and we all have very similar things that we need. The thing is, we wouldn't be approaching it with, with the economic development initiatives and why the, the pools of funds are separate and why there's a separate community for each municipality. They'd be directing for that municipality. And what we would offer, when there's synergies between municipalities, we would offer them to work together. But we would not say you have to work together. The idea is we would be providing services as per each municipality and what they request. So we would be keeping a level of separation unless there was a quest, a request to, to work together. And that's how we would manage that so that two communities or three communities could say, hey, we're all, we're all trying to achieve a very similar thing. And could, could work together or not work together, just is up to them.
Thank you.
I appreciate the presentation as well. I think there, when we're all looking at individual economic development officers, and I know, I know in previous councils, a significant amount of funds has been. Put aside before it and the measurables, it's, it's tough to tell. So on a cost, cost perspective, that's definitely more intriguing, I would say, for council. And then something to just consider that I, that wasn't addressed would be. Regarding essentially mediation and how to establish the, the split of your EDO's time. Because everyone's contributing equally, but some people have projects at one point in a year where others may have them at different points in a year. And just how logistically, that's very much in the weeds, but how logistically, so that one municipality doesn't feel they're committing $40,000 and. And another one has, has, you know, more effort and time.
Yeah, and that, that is something that, that would have to be kind of planned out in, in how we, how we manage it and how we develop it further. It is, it's something that we've worked on a few contracts serving multiple municipalities for a while. And it is a concern that comes up, but in the end. What we aim towards is reaching the, the goals that that municipality is trying to reach. So the municipality is asking for certain things to be reached, certain applications to go in for grants, certain projects to be completed. We're going to, we're going to factor that in and then we're going to be possibly hiring people on to manage that project itself. Again, like I said, the EDO wouldn't be necessarily doing the work. They'll be managing the projects and making sure they're aligned with what the municipality needs, but we might be hiring a coordinator to do that project once we have the funds set up for it.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, thank you for that.
Thank you, guys.
Motion to accept. As information, Counselor Choba?
Make a motion to accept as information.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Call to question those in favor. And that one is carried. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Counselor Grammick?
I just, I was going to try to cut off Andrew. I was going to say, can we make a motion to add this to future budget discussions? Because that's what it's going to pertain to if we have. Funding or not?
Absolutely.
So, yes, please.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to add, add this to future budget discussions.
Okay, so there's motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion on that? Call to question those in favor. And that one is carried. Fantastic. Thank you. And next up, we have Slave Lake Library. Kendra, the floor is yours. And Freddie.
If I didn't do a PowerPoint for anything?
It's okay, it doesn't need to be in.
I'll just do like.
Yep, that works. Do you, do you need to go into closed session or are we okay? Okay. It's a drop body.
A PowerPoint if I knew.
That's fine. It's, it's, it's probably a little more personal if you just talk about it anyways, so.
Yeah, and I didn't know it was a 10-minute time limit. So like, I'm gonna, what I'm going to do is cut out the first.
Who we are and what we do.
What we do, I think if you, most of you should know who we are and what we do. So I did include the papers with all the programming stats and all that.
Absolutely, and, and it's 10 minutes, but without question, like that's not including questions. So if we stop you to ask stuff, so don't feel like you're, you're absolutely under the gun. We do that so that things can. Move along and it's not two hours of a PowerPoint unless it's scheduled. So with that, I will turn the floor over to you and.
Okay, so I think most of you know me, but I'm Kendra McCree. I'm the Regional Library Manager. So I manage Slave Lake, Smith and Flatbush Libraries.
I'm Brandy Bolianitz. I'm the new treasurer for the board. Here to support. Okay, so I'm just going to cut. You can probably slip through the first, through four pages and we'll start with the budget on page five. And as I'm going through the, first I have the budget history, but there's also a chart, the last two pages of the packet. That kind of corresponds with what I'm going to go through. So due to unforeseen circumstances. The fire and then even more so the pandemic. In 2020, the Slave Lake Regional Library Board found themselves in a unique position of having accumulated an unexpected surplus of operational funds. So in the name of fiscal responsibility, the board began self-funding operational increases that were occurring in the amount of. $14,886 in the 2021 budget. That was done so that the increase to the town and the MD contributions that year was zero. In 2022, the board self-funded 50% of the contribution increase in the amount of $17,080, which made the increase to the Town of Slave Lake contribution 11,977. Or 4.1% and the MD $5,102 or 3.66%. In 2023, the board revised the way they would decide on the amount that they were going to self-fund. So they came up with an amount for a three-month, three-month operational reserve, because we all know we don't receive our money in January 1. And then they took the remaining surplus amount for each library from the audit and made a three-to-four-year self-funding plan. This led to the library contributing $28,358 that year towards the operation of the three libraries. The town contribution still increased by $47,445. And the MD by $24,339. So a large part of that increase though was due to Slave Lake needing to hire, Slave Lake Library needing to hire a security guard. 2024 had the board contributing a total of $107,520 towards operation of the three libraries. As a consequence, the town and the MD contributions decreased that year. $56,000 plus for the town and $13,000 plus for the MD. And then finally in 2025, the library board once again contributed to funding operations, the amount of $70,357. Meaning that the Town of Slave Lake contribution amount increased by 48,016.3% and the MD 28,111, 18.05%. But you have to keep in mind that the year before, the contribution amounts decreased substantially. So. That jump was expected, I would hope. So in total, from 2020 to 2025, the library self-funded, library board self-funded a total of $238,220. So that took a big chunk of that surplus that was sitting there and put it back towards operations. So when preparing the 2026 budget, the library board decided to change direction a little bit. And we hope you're on board. The surplus funds have dwindled substantially. Since we began using them for operations. So we think it's important for us, as well as our funders, to now. Consider the fact that the libraries hold substantial capital assets that are expensive to replace. Also being that the library acquired these assets all at once after the fire, of course. Our furniture and equipment is beginning to age and we're facing having to replace some of these things. Being that we have such a beautiful library here in Slave Lake, we would like to be able to keep the decor current and comfortable so community members can have a library that is a source of pride. Once we get our 2025 audit done, that, that's usually around May of the following year. We'll have some concrete numbers and our hope is that we can transfer any remaining surplus funds over and above. The three-month operational reserve to the Town of Slave Lake. So that you guys, along with the MD, can create and manage a capital reserve for Slave Lake Library. If this goes forward, this process will take place in steps because there's funds that are currently sitting in GICs. So those GICs would have to mature before we could transfer the money over. And then once that reserve is created, the, the library will be asking in their budget, like you see in the budget you have in front of you. Putting capital expenses in there. So this year, our budget has increased by $10,824. With Slave Lake Library actually seeing a decrease of $945. Smith Library and Flatbush Library have increased. But these numbers are, can all be accounted for by the capital, the ask for the capital purchases. So if you didn't, if we didn't put those capital purchases into this year's budget, the budget, the overall budget would have actually decreased by over $11,000. So the board kind of worked hard at trying to make this transition from a self-funding to going back to the full contribution ask. We tried to make it. As easy as possible, while still hoping the creation of a capital reserve. So I have, I included just the first page of the capital plan. It's just a summary. If you guys are interested in seeing more of that, I can always email it to you. It's several pages long with each. Section of the library, kind of on a different page of the sheet, Excel sheet, but.
A quick question about your funding request from myself. So we're looking at the, the 388,018 is what you're asking for. Is it, that's in addition to the 7,939? So those two numbers together?
You bet.
Okay, all right. Sorry, keep going.
Yeah, I think that's about it. Like I said, those last charts kind of summarize the last, since 2021, what's been going on and the reasons for the increases and. So.
Okay, so Grammick?
I have a question on the reserve model. So. We, the reserves exist and it's at whatever amount. How does it work? So then do you, do you ask us for the money? We're like. We're holding the money, but do we decide when you get it? Is that the idea of it? Or?
Well, we're, excuse me, we're hoping that you guys will manage the capital reserve so that each year all we have to do is put the ask in our budget. So we will, we, we can keep the plan up to date, but. Be better if you.
It's just, we know the money's there, your ask would be similar, but.
I think the main, and I think one of the main objectives was to have the, the money that's left go towards capital, not necessarily back. not necessarily back into operations like it has been, because then we're leaving ourselves high and dry as far as purchasing, um, capital assets moving forward. And like, library furniture is super duper expensive, right? I, I think you guys are probably aware, but like, when I bought fifty thousand dollars worth a couple of years ago, there, it didn't buy much, so.
Yeah, okay, so it's more, and then it's, I wouldn't say, not an accountability thing, but hey, we had this extra money, put it in our thing, like, it's kind of, that's kind of the premise behind it. So, okay, that helps me understand it a bit more.
Of course, there's other options you guys can discuss and decide, but um, that's just what the library board is proposing.
Sure, and that's what, that's, my questions came along the, the same line, because ultimately, it's the library's capital reserve.
Right.
Um, so essentially, I, I go down logistically. Okay, so the town would be opening up the account, essentially. And, but it's the board, the library board, that makes decisions of what goes in and out of there, and it would be.
I think it would be us maintaining our capital plan. Um, submitting that to you guys with the budget maybe every year, and then including the ask from that year in, kind of in the operational.
And the library, so it'll all be doing the purchasing of the capital assets based on what was transferred over. So, so, yeah, I guess then it's accountability. It's your. The, the only thing I'm just failing to, I, I think you can absolutely develop a capital reserve, just as the library or with the town involved. I'm trying to understand the mechanism for that accountability portion, because it's ultimately the library's reserve. So as the town, we couldn't say, hey, no, you're, you're not following this, because we only have one seat on the library board.
Right.
So it is ultimately your funds. So for, uh, we, there is no, uh, mechanism for us to be like, yeah, no, you don't get that. You're not following the plan. I mean, a board member can, town of Slave Lake board member can say that in a meeting. I just, the, it's the accountability piece, the logistical that maybe I'm missing?
Maybe we missed it too.
That's, that's, that's the only thing I don't, that's the only part I don't, I haven't fully in thinking about all of this as we're talking about it. I just don't understand how. I thi- I think you need a capital reserve, so it's not about the capital reserve. It's about who holds that account. Counselor Grammick?
Uh, under this, though, if we had it, like, we could tell them, no, like, they are gonna give us the money and theoretically, they go, we're holding your money and you're not buying those shelves, right? Like.
Yeah, I think that part of this came about just because you guys were aware of the, of the extra funds, which are taxpayers' dollars, sitting in our bank account. Um, realistically, the capital plan should have probably been created ten years ago or more, similar to library, like. But it is what it is. Um, so for us to just say, we don't want to keep contributing to operations with that extra money. Now, if you guys come back and say, we're not starting a capital reserve, but.
You should.
But we, we want you guys to start one, or when the board can be in charge of that, that's, then we'll move forward with that.
I, I, I do see there is a mechanism to do it if we had structured it that the town of Slave Lake is owns the, like, we own the reserve and then change it through contributions or whatever. If we kept it that separate, not just holding the bank account. I think there was, there's some logistics in there that could be worked out, but the intention is to, from, if I'm understanding correctly, is for the library to set up a capital reserve. Regardless of ownership at this time, we'd like some oversight from council to make sure we're following the tenure capital plan.
Yeah.
Is that kind of in the?
Yeah, and I think you guys probably have the staff who have the knowledge, um, about all this as well, whereas.
Uh, and I, I think that's probably more so where it stems from, is that there really isn't anyone on the board who has that background. And if, um, there was somebody, uh, with the town that has the knowledge, knows about capital reserves, that could provide some management of it on our behalf. That's sort of how, what, what we were looking at.
Okay, yeah, it's good to, it's helpful to understand the intention of what we're, we're trying to do, because there's policies and things that can be set. That's why I wanted to.
Well, the money that's seen there, that's left, is gonna run out eventually. So, kind of by handing it to you guys, we're saying, like, we're gonna be asking for it. And if it's, it'll be there for a bit with the money that we would, but after that, it would be kind of to the town to keep contributing to that reserve, the town and the M D. Yeah.
I'll give council a minute here if they have any more questions about it.
Nothing. Okay, I'm always available.
Yeah, I'd be able to give them a second to take a look through. I don't, I don't see any huge changes. Obviously, our largest costs are staffing. Have we done, do we have any information about hours, uh, as far as like hours of operation? Are we comparable to other libraries our size? Like, are we offered?
We're at the high end.
We're at the high end?
For operating hours, we are. And that's one of the things, um, the notes I had for myself was that part of the way we were able to cut a little bit was, um, in the summer to close an hour earlier, so that would decrease our staffing and our security costs slightly.
Okay.
So we just assessed how many people are actually coming in in the summer after seven o'clock, and it's not worth it, so.
Counselor Hughes?
Um, yeah, I was actually gonna ask about the security. The security is obviously still a necessary component for you guys at this time.
Oh, yeah, you see numbers go down, but it's because there's a security guard.
Right. So that's been effective for you since having that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't feel comfortable now at this point cutting it, um, completely.
Okay, um, and just kind of a random, not random, but a question about your tenure plan here. On the first seven years or so of the plan, you just have, um, money each year for staff room. Can you just elaborate? Is that just? Oh, that's. Furniture or certain items or?
Yeah, like if you were to see the other pages, there's, I, I kind of pieced it all out into areas of the library.
Okay, okay.
So staff room and then bookshelves, main library, the line stand, uh, um, yeah.
You're just sectioning out pieces.
Rest of that, it would make more sense.
Okay.
I just didn't want the, it to be like, you guys wouldn't have a chance to look through it right now anyway, but.
Okay, well, maybe that's something, if you do have a little bit more, um, in-depth prepared, if you could send that over when we do budget deliberations, it'd be nice to just get a feel for exactly what's on the plan and whereabouts that is.
Will do.
Thank you. Hey, anything else? I don't see anything.
Counselor Grammick?
I'll just make a motion to, uh, add library to future budget discussions.
Okay, we're gonna motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Call to question those in favor. And that one is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Chova?
Motion to accept as information.
Motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Call to question those in favor. And that one is also carried. Perfect. Okay, as there's, we've made the motions, there's no additional business arising from delegations, then we can go into our twenty twenty-six interim operating and capital budget. Roland. Where you will be for a large portion of the evening.
So, good evening, your worship and members of council. Uh, before you is the twenty twenty-six interim operating and capital budget. As you may be aware or not aware, uh, the municipality has to have a budget in place before January first. Um, so before you, I've just prepared an interim operating budget to get, uh, to keep the lights on. Uh, pay staff and make sure that we keep going forward while we finalize, uh, our actual twenty twenty-six budget. Um, so I've just done an estimation of the cost of the town will need for the, uh, January, February, March, and that's what's before you there. And the capital budget also is, just includes, uh, the projects that we know that are ongoing. Um, and then we will add to this list when we finalize the actual twenty twenty-six budget.
Okay. Any questions from? Any motions from council? Okay, I will, I will make the motion then, um, that council approved the interim operating and capital budgets for twenty twenty-six as presented. So my motion is on the floor. Is there any further discussion from council? Call to question those in favor. And that one is carried. Okay. Now, we're gonna move into budget discussions and planning and development. Joanna, are up first. So I'll give council just a couple of minutes if you want to pull up that section of your budget documents. And Joanna, when you're ready?
Yeah, I can do my overview first.
Sure.
Uh, good evening, your worship and members of council. Uh, so the planning department provides professional planning services to the town council, town administration, municipal planning commission, subdivision and development appeal board, external agencies and developers. We assist developers with matters pertaining to subdivision and development with a focus on customer service. The planning department administers all subdivision and development applications, including screening submissions, coordinating referrals, notifying landowners and preparing reports and recommendations to the subdivision authority or the municipal planning commission. It ensures compliance with legislative requirements, manages municipal reserve dedications and disposals, oversees civic addressing within the town of Slave Lake, and prepares and updates statutory planning documents such as the municipal development plan, area structure plans, and the land use bylaw, along with processing any required amendments, public notices, and hearings. In addition to application processing, the department prioritizes customer service through phone, email, and in-person inquiries, and manages appointments as needed. It supports municipal boards by preparing bylaws, agendas, reports, and minutes for the M P C and reports for the subdivision development appeal board. The department is also responsible for road closures, including bylaw preparation to close roads, roads, agen- agency referrals, coordination with Alberta Transportation, and registration of those approved closures. The department is committed to delivering quality, customer-focused municipal planning and development services with an emphasis on responsible planning for economic growth and long-term susta- term sustainability for live and work neighborhoods and public safety. In the past year, the department has seen changes in staffing and roles. And despite these changes and significant shifts in resources, the department managed to stay on track within allocated timeframes for several high-level projects. The department completed two major statutory plan rewrites, the municipal development plan and land use bylaw in August twenty twenty-five. This project concluded after eighteen months and involves significant public engagement and meetings in the first half of twenty twenty-five. The last half of the year was spent engaging with new statutory doc, the new statutory documents and helping residents and developers navigate the process of development within the municipality. And we have had positive feedback around the changes made. Um, many of the planning department statutory regulatory, regulatory plans are outdated. So it will take significant time and financial commitment to bring them all up to date. The planning department will be working over the next five to ten years to ensure these plans are current. And the next statutory plan being discussed or updating is the intermunicipal development plan, which will be a joint project with the M D less of Slave River likely in twenty twenty-seven. The planning department will also improve customer service by participating in the ERP software team. The town sweep software package will facilitate and streamline delivery and issuance of development permits and other planning and development services, which are currently all manual systems at this time. So the department would like to head towards providing digital services for the permitting process from start to finish. The planning department is working on the development of four and eight place subdivision, but this project will be driven by landowners and their timelines for development. We will be carrying on ongoing mentoring and planning of the planning and development officer. Uh, and also, the department will focus on training and professional development for relevant planning and development emerging trends and processes for the department as a whole. So that's my overview. Are you taking?
Yep, and with that, we can, uh, jump into the planning department, which is on page one sixty-six. And with that, uh, there's not a whole lot of changes within the departments. Uh, we've kept revenue consistent. However, there'll be a report next week.
Next week.
Uh, just discuss, discussing some of the.
Because we had the, of the resolution that was made to remove development fees through half of twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, that had an effect on our revenue for twenty twenty-five, obviously. So we will be bringing that report with the information of what that effect was and it will be at council's discussion.
And the resulting, are we, is, is that your report gonna address the resulting changes in development?
Yes.
Okay.
If the, how it may have affected.
Yeah, multiple factors, but I just want to make sure that it wasn't just, hey, we lost this much money, but.
No.
If we can get a breakdown of the other items.
Yep.
Just double checking.
Uh, so yeah, so we've kept the revenue consistent up until, uh, we'll do that report next week, uh, for salaries and benefits. Uh, so this is just a position change. Used to be a manager, and now we have a director. Uh, those funds were reallocated from the community services, uh, director. Uh, other than that, there's an ask for a thousand dollars for travel and training, uh, for a U of A course.
Uh, well, we have one staff member that is completing her, the training through the U of A for the A L U P program, which is the Applied Land Use Planning, as well as we have some other additional professional development that we would like to take part in each April with the Community Planning Association of Alberta.
And the other ask is just for a increase in memberships to join another organization.
You have a button, Alex?
Yeah, sorry to interrupt, just for clarification. It was corporate services director, not community service.
Sorry, yep, corporate services.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I was like, Alex, you have a button. Hit the button. Uh, okay, let's, uh, da, 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 da. So just the one change to travel and training.
Joining another organization and a slight adjustment to office place.
Any questions for this planning and development detail? I see none. If you want to continue into the land development detail, is that also on this one?
Uh, no, we'll tackle that on a different.
We'll talk about that on a different day. Okay.
Really, the only remaining part in the land development is actually under community services.
Okay, that's the beautification portion?
Yep.
And then. Okay, yeah, the only other thing in this section is economic development detail. Are we doing that now?
Uh, we can if you want. Um, for economic development, um, so we significantly clawed back the program. Uh, the only thing that we have left in there is some wages, uh, for the.
At the rural renewal?
Yes, rural renewal. Um, and that's the fees for services, uh, also the fees that we're charging for the rural, rural renewal program. So, uh, everything else has been removed.
I'm gonna ask a, a question to administration at that table. Um, rural renewal, when does that, that expires in March? Okay, and do we have, have we had, or is there an upcoming report on that program or something?
We can get one prepared for you. The government recently changed a bunch of the rules around it, so we're gonna have to have a pretty in-depth conversation, but.
Okay, so then, uh, we'll end up, uh, okay, we'll take a look at making motions for that after, but I was just curious if there was already a planned upcoming report in order to address that, but if there isn't, then we can, we can look at motions for that. Okay, then, any other questions for economic development from here? Okay. We can.
One motion after.
I, well, their motion to accept as information or the motion for, I could make a motion for, someone needs to make a motion for the report. Counselor Chova?
Make a motion to accept as information.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the planning and development budget discussion as information. Any further discussion? Call to question those in favor. And that one is carried. Um, Chris, Chris, yeah, Counselor Grammick, you wanna make that one?
Uh, make a motion for administration to bring a report on the rural renewal stream during budget discussion at some point, please.
Thank you. Motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Call to question those in favor. And that one is also carried. Okay, we'll move into.
So just a slight change on there. So we did have operations slated, but I do, uh, our operations director is currently out, out working the snow.
Yeah.
Um, so I did bring Cody. He handles the utilities, which is kind of a subsection there, just with him in mind. I just wanna bump that one up so that you can kinda.
He looks comfortable.
Fine, Cody. Kidding. Take the floor. We'll bump, we'll bump, uh, water and wastewater up then, which are part of operations.
Page ninety-eight.
Page ninety-eight. And then are we gonna do operations after?
After fire services.
Okay, we'll shuffle. Okay, got it.
All right, uh, good evening, mayor and council, so. All right, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, so. We are here to discuss the twenty twenty-five utilities, twenty twenty-six utilities operations budget. Um, we are responsible for the water and sewer system throughout the town of Slave Lake and into the MD. We treat roughly nine hundred and fifty million cubic meters of water a year. And as well, we treat very similar amounts of wastewater. We operate two raw water pump stations, two treated water reservoirs, our water treatment facility. Five lift stations throughout town and a, uh, four lagoon, three saggers cell wastewater treatment system.
Any questions on the operations, uh, water sewer?
I see nothing on operations right now, so if you want to go through the.
All right. Then we can just jump ahead here to page. Hundred and one. Uh, so there's no, uh, you'll see some wages and benefits and salaries kinda changed around. Um, so all that is, is internal allocation, the bottom line, uh, nothing changed the same, uh, we just kinda looked at exactly where time was spent. Um, and kinda reallocated from there. Uh, there's a couple of shifts here, uh, where we had the director of operations. Um, so he is now, uh, accounted for sixty percent in operations and forty percent in water. For his management of the two services, um, and so that's, uh, some of the bump up in wages. Cody being the supervisor, uh, we've moved him more into administration. Um, and so you'll see those, uh, bump, bump ups and changes in salaries, however, bottom line is, there's still seven F T Es in the water program and those are all internal. Uh, starting on page one oh three, um, with, uh, water administration. Um, so slight adjustment to the sale of water just based on, uh, the, uh, numbers that we're seeing. Uh, sale of bulk water, uh, we've bumped that up, uh, for the last three years, we have seen an increase at the, uh, bulk water stations. Um, so we're pretty confident that we're able to hit the ninety thousand dollar target. Uh, connection fees, again, those have, uh, just kind of been adjusted to, uh, a four-year average of what we've been seeing year over year. Um, and outside of that. Uh, the only other significant chunk here is, at the end of this year, we have one debenture that will be fully paid off from a line that was. Uh, built quite, quite a long time ago, a twenty-year debenture that's ending this year. Um, which adds a little bit back into our contribution to, uh, reserve.
So, from just summary on administration there, I'm seeing, uh, increase of, just projecting. Increase in the water sales, so we're just trying to align it to actuals and then an allocation based on the different.
Yeah.
Managers, directors, just the portion.
Yep, we're just moving, uh, kind of more accurate to where everyone's role is placed and.
That is my favorite thing.
Uh, so if we continue on, on page hundred and five, uh, water treatment. So again, here, not a whole lot of asks, um, so internet services, we've, uh, adjusted that. Uh, so we did get, we were able to get a fiber line at the water plant finally, uh, it was still based on copper line. Uh, so now, uh, we have, uh, stable internet over there, uh, for all of the, uh. Skater systems and services that are needed over there. Uh, equipment repairs and maintenance, uh, so there is, uh, this is, we're trying to bring it more online and give our, uh, give the water treatment a little bit more, uh. Money to, uh, repair the facility. Uh, historically, this one's kind of gone a little bit over the, the seventy thousand dollar, uh, budget amount, I think an extra five, uh, we can get closer. Uh, and outside of that, uh, there's just an adjustment to lab materials, uh, costs around there, I'll let Cody kinda speak on exactly what those are.
Yeah, we, uh, they've kind of increased our testing requirements mildly, plus with inflation, that kind of, uh. Equipment seems to go up pretty steadily and you're unfortunately forced to, to pay what it costs. Cause you have machinery that only takes certain reagents and they raise it, you, you buy it.
Uh, any questions on the treatment side?
Just taking a look at the actuals, just a bit confused for a minute there. Anything on water treatments? Okay. Counselor Gronnik.
I will make a motion, accept the report as information.
Oh, still got.
There's more departments.
More from what? Still more, I also got a couple more here to go.
Oh, God.
Moving on to the next.
There's wastewater too.
We got water distribution.
Hey.
So again, right here, there's really no significant changes, um, adjusted materials. Just to be able to purchase the same amount.
Keep go- keep on going.
And, uh, water pumping. Um, so we just had a one-time project in twenty twenty-five that we tackled for contracted services. That's completed, so, uh, we decreased that amount back. So again, no really significant changes.
And these are, okay, so two months of powered gas left, can you?
Yeah, we power gas, we definitely monitor, I think we did our large project there, which, uh, we did discover there was, uh. Uh, some power issues there, but we have, uh, since fixed those and, uh. We're on the right path there.
Such an eventful budget for water. Keep on going.
Okay, wastewater, we can, uh, jump into the detail there on admin on page one hundred and twelve. So really no significant changes here, uh, we've updated the sale of water and sale of bulk water, just based on what we've, uh, seen. Uh, trending upwards on the sale of bulk water, uh, sale of water, of course, uh, for wastewater kind of mirrors, uh, water, so brought those in line. And other than that, there's really not a whole lot in the admin budget for wastewater. Uh, wastewater lines, again, real no asks here, we've def- updated, uh. Uh, cut, equipment rental, as, was it just a line code we didn't need and wage adjustments that were relocated. Uh, continuing on, on lift stations. Uh, again, no real change status quo for the budget here. And then the, uh, last one here is wastewater treatment, so this is kinda where most of our asks are coming from. Uh, so we have the equipment and repairs. Um, so we're, we are seeing an uptick in the, the need to repair the facility, uh, a little bit. A- additional increase for materials, and then the largest jump is for chemicals. And then I can, uh, Cody can do that, we are now mandated, uh, to treat some of the, uh.
Yeah, they've, uh, cut our total phosphorus limit in half. We used to have a one milligram per liter limit, now it's point five, so we're currently piloting different chemicals to see what, uh. What kind of drops that to the required limit. Um, only do it in the summer months, that's the only time we see the increase, so, uh. The method we went with this year did work, but I think they might be trying a different. Kind of lower intensity chemical next year that, uh. We'll see where that goes, and then once we settle on it, we'll have a final budget line for that and understand what the chemical cost will actually be, so you'll see some variance. This year, there was variance last year, there might be variance following year, but we're, uh, pretty much hitting the button on the end there and figured it out, so.
So a non-technical waterspeak that is, they set, they being the various levels of government.
Yeah, the government of Alberta.
The government of Alberta set different requirements and you require more chemicals in order to meet said requirements.
Yeah, yeah, our current treatment process is not dropping the number as low as it needs to get, so we are, uh, modifying that process to lower that number.
Perfect, I just wanted to make sure I understood that properly.
Yep.
Great.
And with that, that's the water and sewer budget.
Fantastic. Counselor Gronnik.
A motion to accept the report as information.
Okay, motion on the floor, any further discussion? Call to question those in favor, and that one is carried, and with that, we are going to take a. Ten-minute recess. Please, and thank you. Apologies to fire. Let's just, just an extreme look of disappointment for that, thank you.
Laura's yours.
Perfect, so we'll start with the fire program. I have the chief here. You can just give a brief overview of the fire services. It encompasses a whole bunch of components here. And then we can dive into the budget.
Thank you, Mayor Council. The Leicester State Regional Fire Service strives to maintain safe communities by providing cost-effective and highly efficient fire and rescue services to the communities of Widewater, Wagner, Martin River, Slave Lake, Mitsu, Smith, Chisholm, Flatbush, Sawyers First Nation, and visitors who visit our region annually. As well as being a center for training excellence, the Leicester State Regional Fire Service is certified as an accredited agency in the fire discipline. Under the Safety Codes Act, to provide effective and timely origin and cause investigations and inspections to our surrounding communities under contract. The Fire Hall also acts as the regional command center in the event of a disaster. Fire service, fire services is committed to providing a safe and sustainable future within our communities through emergency preparedness, fire prevention programs, training and education. Through partnership and collaboration, we endeavor to provide timely emergency response, safer communities with sustainable fire and life safety initiatives, education, and emergency response.
Perfect, that's good. Yeah, um, so just a brief overview of the fire program as well. Um, so fire services is a service that we do share with the M D. Uh, lesser slave river. Uh, we do run on a cost share program on a fifty fifty basis. Um, so in A new addition to this year as well. Uh, so while the program was started in twenty twenty five, uh, we're fully budgeting it for twenty twenty six, and that is the new we program. Um, that is a provincially funded program. Um, we administer it here at the, uh, at the fire hall. However, all the expenses, all the personnel that are there, uh, that's fully covered by the province. Um, and Just to note that, uh, also in the document there, as for additional asks, uh, council was given a three-year, uh, staffing proposal by the fire department. In the current budget here, uh, we're asking for two additional firefighters. Uh, so you can see the F T E's at the, uh, at the top there. So on their fire services, uh, twenty twenty five. We have four, uh, we're looking to go to, uh, six F T Es under the fire service. Uh, we also have four F T E's, uh, that are under the fire smart program. And so just to update everybody on the fire smart program, this is a, uh, kind of a older program. Uh, that started around, I want to believe twenty thirteen. Um, and it's through careful management of the program. We've been able to, uh, take the existing provincial funding And kind of stretch it out even, uh, till today. Um, that funding under the current, uh, plan should be, uh, kind of fully ran out by about twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine. The town does contribute as well as the F P, every year additional increases, uh, so that we can retain that service. Um, and with that though, we can start, uh, jumping down into the actual budget lines. Uh, starting on page fifty seven. Um, and so within that, uh, in the document that we have, we've made a couple of adjustments there, uh, fees for service. Uh, we've kind of slightly brought that in line with the expectations that we, uh, are expecting next year and twenty twenty five. We had two hundred and thirty five. Uh, we believe that was a little bit overly optimistic. Uh, we revised that number, uh, down to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And some of those services that we do provide. Here, note here. Um, so the services that we do have are the cot rentals that we do have. Uh, we have the woo woo trailer that we can rent out and then, uh, fire inspections. And we also, uh, contract out our services to the storage. Uh, the training program, uh, so while it shows a decrease here, all we've done here is kind of, uh, to better revamp and, uh, Account for the expenditures, we've just moved it into its own cost center. So while it shows a decrease here, uh, we've just moved this program somewhere else. Uh, deployment revenue, uh, we've added about two hundred thousand dollars, uh, in anticipated deployment revenue. Uh, this is with our own people and with the routine. Um, and outside of that, um, uh, revenue remains the same. Any questions on revenue?
So just looking at the changes document here, um, a couple of things. So we took out the, we changed the training program revenue. So just a couple of changes to note when we come To budget discussion again, we put in the training program revenue for the college stuff back in. Yes, the one fifty, is that what that is?
Yes.
And then, so just so we know that the expenses of forty for the training program didn't get added back in on this one, on the draft document. Okay, unless I've missed that. But I think the hundred and fifty went in and the, the, the forty didn't come, make it back over. Alex, did you want to?
Yeah, we'll make a note of it. I think it might be in a separate line item, but we, I guess you're saying.
Yeah, well, if the hundred and fifty is in, then the forty should be in a hundred and fifties.
Yeah, it's down on that document there. So if you go under S R, it says training programs dash contracted service.
Okay, we moved it down there.
Yeah.
Training, okay.
That, that one right there has all of the different things that make up that, uh.
Perfect. No, that makes sense. I didn't, I should have just scrolled. Never mind. Ignore my question on that one.
Uh, as for the expenses, so you'll see on there. So there was just, uh, an adjustment made in twenty twenty, late twenty twenty four that didn't make it into the twenty twenty five budget. Again, these were Uh, just, uh, position adjustments, uh, that we currently have. We didn't add any staff with the additional salary in that updated document. Uh, we've removed Uh, the two F T E's budgeted, and I've put that below just so that we can see, uh, year to year, uh, the changes. So the actual salary changes that are showing there Are, uh, wage grid adjustments that were done in twenty twenty four that were now capturing twenty twenty six. Uh, so no additional personnel. Other than that are asks, uh, under that are five thousand dollars extra for the fire brigade. And so what this is, is, um, this is Compensation for the volunteer firefighters. Um, it's paid out based on the number of calls, uh, they enter a certain number of points depending on how active each member is. And then this pot, uh, helps supplement, uh, uh, our volunteers, compensates them a little bit, not a whole lot for the, the time commitment they've been, uh, putting in to help, uh, serve the community. Uh, we've made some adjustments to the internet services. Um, there was an additional line there, uh, that we took out, uh, now that we have the fiber optics. So this, uh, new line going forward, uh, should be Uh, reflective of the true cost over at the hall now. Uh, medical services. Uh, we have bumped that up eleven thousand five hundred. Um, and this is just a reflection of the, uh, services, uh, the true cost of the service Uh, that are provided to the members. Uh, so all members have to go through a physical and that, uh, they have to go to the doctor. Um, so this does pay for some of the doctor expenses for all of the members and the volunteers. And so that cost is built, uh, built to us. Uh, additional supports, uh, that we provide for the members. Our counseling services. Uh, and hearing tests. And so, uh, that's just reflective of the updated costs for, uh, for the services for all the members. Um, equipment and repairs and maintenance. Uh, so again, um, we are seeing our repair bills on Most of the equipment, uh, go up. So we're, uh, budgeting a little bit higher here, uh, to try and capture some of those costs. Uh, you'll see in your year to date. We're probably close, if not at, at the, uh, equipment limits. And we also have a fairly large, uh, Repair bill coming along there. Um, so we're just trying to kind of catch up to exactly where our current equipment and repair maintenance budget, uh, should be sitting. Uh, contracted services. Again, we've asked, uh, an additional amount there of twelve thousand. Um, and this is just reflective. Um, there was a slight adjustment for, uh, some of the garbage pickup and, uh, cleaning services, uh, that are over at the fire hall.
I do have a couple of questions, so I'll just jump in before we go along. So mobile device services I see in the year to date work twenty two thousand eight thirty five. Is that correct? Whereas we're, and we're budgeting six, and I'm wondering if there was a one type thing.
That was the grant for the.
Well, that was, yeah. So we received a grant from our donation from Plains. Um, and we bought, uh, iPads For all of the apparatus through that grant or donation. So it would be offset by the donation.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure that we're not regularly needing the twenty two thousand for what was a.
Yep. That was a one time.
Okay. And then my other question at the moment is, so equipment repairs and maintenance, and I understand we have some big repair bills coming. Now forgive my ignorance on what we are able to do in-house or not, but we have mechanics, yes. And what are we contracting out?
So currently we contract out like all our C V I P inspections. So all the apparatus require that annually, um, as well as our pump tests. So each apparatus has to have an annual pump test to make sure that it, uh, meets specification. Um, and then any other major repairs. So, uh, with the amount of apparatus we have, it's hard to keep. Uh, we could, well, we had seventeen through the whole service of major apparatus. That's probably two to three mechanics worth of work to maintain on their own. So it's, yeah. And then the, the maintenance coordinator looks after the, the smaller repairs that can be done in-house and in a timely manner.
Yep. No, I was just curious what we're able to do. It's more of an understanding of the, the full scope of operations, what we're able to do in-house, what we aren't able to do. That was just more, more so a curiosity than a, than a question of the numbers. Shocking, I know. Um. And what's in contracted services? Again, you probably went over it.
Oh, so yeah, contracted services. So we do have, uh, this is garbage pickup.
Garbage pickup. Okay, that's what that was.
Janitorial services, mat cleaning.
Okay.
And then there's a couple of other, uh, smaller items.
Okay. That's it for me for now.
All right, uh, continuing on, uh, dispatch services. Uh, so again, uh, slight adjustment there, uh, decrease of two thousand dollars. Uh, that's just based on the updated rate that we had. Uh, the bigger increase that we have is I T licensing. Uh, so we did get a new program in twenty twenty four, twenty five. Um, and that program is now fully up and running, and this just reflects the annual cost. Uh, with that program, um, what was severely lacking at the fire hall was kind of an inventory management Uh, program. This one's also all encompassing, attracts all the calls, who's on the call, attracts, um, training records, uh, all of that ability that was, uh, kind of Lacking at the hall before, um, uh, sort of needed. And, uh, we had approval within house in the prior year To go out and purchase that. And so now we're just reflecting the annual operating cost of the program. Um, going down, uh, so we see search and rescue here. So again, this isn't really an increase. Uh, we're just, uh, reallocating it Uh, from its own cost center into one line item, um, just to make administration of the program, uh, easier. Um, the other ask here is clothing, uniforms and footwear, an additional ten thousand dollars, uh, our gear and, uh, clothing. Uh, is jumping up in costs. Um, so we're just looking for additional funding to be able to carry on with that P P E. And janitorial supplies, again, a little bit of supply cost going up. We're just reflecting, uh, kind of the current need at the hall. Um, medical supplies. Uh, so this one is, uh, have increased it a little bit. However, uh, for the most part, um, At least five thousand dollars of this is offset by a grant from A H S. Um, however, we do require a couple, uh, extra supplies and depending on, uh, the grant program, uh, from year to year, it may be more than the budgeted five. So this This, it's possible that this entire increase is offset by a grant. Uh, right now it's known that we're going to get at least five grand. Um, computer equipment. Uh, so what I do here is because we do split the costs, uh, with the M D. So this is again Uh, part of our computer equipment replacement program. Um, where we have identified all the machines that we need. And so in twenty twenty six, I believe there's one machine at the hall that we have slated to replace. And so that's, uh, where you see that cost. And then the last one there, we have a material adjustment. Again, this isn't a budget increase. Um, this is just a consolidation of, uh, we had disaster materials of four thousand dollar line item, kind of in its own little thing that didn't really make sense. Uh, so we've just moved that into, uh, the bigger budget for administration purposes. And with that, that's kind of the, uh, fire services, as we call it, or hall one, uh, type budget that manages the, the region.
Counselor Hughes, um, motion to accept the fire services as presented or as information.
I got a couple more.
Oh, you had more? Oh.
It's a bigger one too.
You're drawing me off. Oh, you have a question. You go ahead then.
It was, uh, so this, this is basically kind of, uh, this is what it, the fire services does last year, service level. This is what it costs. I, it might be more of a question for a former fire chief or, uh, The, the extra positions that you brought up last year during budget. We want to discuss that now and what that would add to this group. So it's not, so it's at least captured for this council and Could be added in after strategic planning and so on.
Yeah. So there is, uh, um, the, the month, the, the ask in this current document that you're reading is, is basically giving you the service you had last year, the student program. Um, There is a, a separate document and it's at the bottom of the document you receive today for the potential new staff. None of the other line items, um, should increase. The, the P P, you know, there is a one-time fee for boots and stuff like that, but it'll probably fit into the The current budget. So basically the, the only ask increase in that staffing module that was presented, um, originally would be Just the wages and the benefits and things that come with that. All of the other line items should stay relatively, um, what they are in this ask for what, what was received last year for fire services. That answer your question?
Oh, I was just gonna, kinda, for me, I kind of already know a lot of answers because I've Sat around the table and talked to these gentlemen, you a lot. I just thought maybe for the new counselors, you could, If we're going to talk about adding positions later down the road, you could explain while they're here, or they could give a bit of a sales picture.
So, yeah. So if you wanna, if you wanna refer to that document, um, deputy chief coots is, is probably the most, uh, up to speed on that. And he could speak to that.
Yeah, three of this four, three of the seven seats at the table weren't at the last fire services before the election. So if you want to go over, because there is the ask, so What we're being presented is status quo with material, like to run it as is. And obviously there's inflation and material changes. So that's what we've got here for the updated. But then the ask, which will be considered after strategic planning is two additional. So we'll, just for background. Then you can explain why.
Um, so the three-year staff proposal was brought forth, um, at inter municipal and, um, Uh, brought to, to both councils at the same. Uh brought to to both councils at the same time, um essentially the the biggest increases that we would see as a service. Uh and service levels would be moving from Monday to Friday staffing, uh that's currently eight AM to five PM. Uh and moving it to ten-hour days, uh seven days a week, so. The extra two staff allows uh to split into two crews of three, um a lot of these conversations come up due to um. The firefighters that we have and uh the changing work uh schedules and stuff like that uh that we see. Um the decreased number of responders that we're seeing throughout the day, um and so that allows us to to have a full-time crew on. At a capacity of three, uh seven days a week for ten-hour days, uh rather than just the Monday and Friday. Uh it also allows for us to have additional ca- uh capabilities to have people available for uh deployments when those come up. From the province uh and assist with those pieces, um and then additionally, being able to get out and get our firefighters the training that they. Uh so that's obviously a big thing that uh we pride ourselves in is having the service levels that we have and the the training that we have for our firefighters and. Um trying to capture everyone's life and schedules and everything else uh can be difficult at times, so. The Monday night trainings uh work for the majority of our people, but the the amount of times we're trying to catch up on skills, make sure that those firefighters are hitting all of those things. That they're required to hit every year, um as per OHNS, uh if we have a service level in it, we have to try to make sure that we are capturing um. And giving those people the tools that they need, so um you know, allowing for extra skill catch-ups, training nights, uh things like that into the weekends. Um and having some of those other sessions uh throughout Hall One and three other operational rural stations. And just to clarify too, and so the fire department is made up of actual paid firefighters. And a big complement that is volunteers, so a lot of that training and stuff is for the volunteers to. That to help out during the day, and that's that's where the we're seeing the numbers decreases in the amount of volunteers that we're able to attract. Um and so, you know, on the on the pace that we're going, uh with everyone's work schedules, trying to get volunteers is definitely a challenge, especially volunteers throughout the day. Um so we're more reliant on our full-time staff to be able to to make up that coverage.
Speaking of volunteers. Somebody just passed his uh probation or recruit status last night, so.
And having now firsthand knowledge. Kind of work, it is a significant chunk of time and investment that 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 it does require, so I can definitely. Uh you know, uh understand the challenges that the hall does and the amount of training that is required, it is a fairly in-depth process, so. Um this additional ask is just to help out the department and keep our service levels in our community and surrounding regions safe.
Also provide a a better work-life balance for the current full-time staff with the training requirements for Monday night trainings. Sometimes Tuesday night trainings and then also Wednesday night trainings, and then those members are also responding to calls, juggling all that in between. Working five days a week and then training two to three days a week.
Counselor.
I'll I'll just comment, not on behalf of the fire department, but a little bit. Advocate for for you, I'm trying to find a document, I'll, you look at all the things that they they add to, they're not just doing the fire service or the motor vehicle accidents. We we have programs where they're 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 earning a revenue of sorts and it doesn't fully. Pay for all their wages and everything, but not many fire departments have a revenue stream, and that's not what this is tied to, but they're. They go above and beyond and extra help would would fill some of those voids and still give them their day-to-day operations as extra help with your day-to-day stuff, right? So there's a, there's something to think about there when when we're talking staffing numbers and. It was presented last year by Alex and some of it never dawned on the council of the day sitting here until it was presented as, hey, like. Who goes and volunteers their life, right? Like, people say you're nuts to be on council, well, I I these guys are nuts to have volunteer firefighters where they're going. To motor vehicle accidents and and fires and that's slowly dropping down, so some extra staff is needed as that fades away from society, so. That's my advocacy for position.
And I'll weigh in there, what did receive a positive response on previous council with intermunicipal uh from the MD one twenty-four, just for our new counselors at the table. From those counselors and our council of the time, uh they did receive a positive discussion there. Same thing as as Counselor Gramlick alluded to, that uh the fire department hasn't made a lot of, a lot of asks. Um with regards to staffing, usually it's a make-do with what you have and and you go anyways. Um is kind of the attitude that I've got from our, you know, fire department, you just do it. And also the fire department too, and I'm on the same, the same vein here, is fire department is actually the first people to volunteer for anything. Barbecues, parking, I don't know how many community events, we'll just see the fire truck roll up, so. Uh they're just on behalf of myself, just really appreciate all of that, that our department and to all your volunteers and 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 members there that it. We do see the fire department active in the community, so while we do have to bring this, obviously for discussion for the wages, I think the. The the pitch that we were presented at intermunicipal was was very reasonable, and I actually think we should actually probably get that sent out to new council, cuz I believe there was a document. Um so we'll make sure we we get that over to the new council members from Alex's shaking.
It was, it was in the original budget documents, they're rolling it sent out.
Perfect, okay, I. That's a lengthy document, so it didn't get there, but their initial pitch is there, so um we can, we can review that then, so I guess that's my. PSA as well, Alex.
If I may add, just for in the same context, if you look at the fire brigade. Um number of of asking to increase it to eighty-five thousand dollars this year, that covers about forty-five people. So, you know, forty-five firefighters in Slave Lake showing up. All day and all night, and we're asking to get eighty-five thousand dollars to pay them, um that's not even a full-time wage. For everybody else, so, you know, they do a lot of this on their own time, and they're not asking for a lot of money to do it. Just my two cents, I know it's already a positive conversation.
No, it's, we we appreciate that and and trying to bring context to to multiple years of of items there. Just taking a look at anything else in here. Yeah, I don't think I have any questions for this counselor, spouse.
Just a quick question for the wage ranges that are in the package, how are those? How do those compare with other communities? Like, is that, is there a standard firefighter thing, or is there roof, you know? Um it's got example of the twenty twenty-seven wage range from the twenty-eighty hours versus twenty-one ninety-two, and I'm just wondering. Are those comparable for what we're, you know?
We do have that, I believe, in the original document.
Alex can answer, apparently.
So I I apologize, you did reach out and ask me that question, and I totally forgot to forward it to the chief and deputy chief, so. Uh they're gonna probably change the door code on me, um so the wage review is done every couple of years, as with all town staff. Um as as far as regional fire services, it's very hard because there's, there's only a couple in the province, Bonneville, um Wood Buffalo, uh and some of those. Yeah, Wood Buffalo is a union department, and we're not competing with union wages by any means. Um so we're, you know, if you were just looking at the town of Slave Lake proper, our wages probably do appear a little bit high. Um but when you look at the regional model, then we're we're under where they probably should be, um but we're given the other things that they're given. Um and and some of the ask that they have as far as, you know, the the potential of new staff, they're they're okay with that for now, but we do need to look at a. In the next couple of years, a wage review just to keep them, you know, they can leave, and they do, they do go to the union departments and. It's not always greener on the other side, but uh you know, they're topping out in three or four years of a hundred and thirty, forty thousand dollars, we're not touching that.
Yeah, no, that's why, like I said, I was wondering that it's not going, there's, what do you compare it with? Because you're not, you can't compare it to just a town.
Yeah, so some of the things that council gives us is, or gives them is, you know, we have, they have, I'm still learning. Really good equipment, they have a decent fire hall, you know, um they do have awesome support from both town and MD council, so some of those other things offset. You know, we all like the money in our pocket, but it also helps with some of those other things that get brand-new bunker gear over the last couple of years, so they are supported in other ways.
Continue.
All right, so if we just continue on on page sixty-one. Um so again, this is kind of like a makeshift budget, um the programs hasn't really had uh enough time to mature. Uh so we've just kind of attached kind of estimations just to match the program here. Um once we fully run the program in twenty twenty-six, we'll have uh a better idea on individual items, so these items may go up or down. However, the the capture here is is a pervert provincially-run program. Um we get a grant for it, doesn't cost the town anything, and we get additional for uh for people uh on some off time. Uh to help out uh for free.
Again, if I may add, for the new council, the wages and all of that is covered under the grant, all of the rev- revenue created from our equipment. Comes back to the town of Slave Lake MD, depending where it comes from, so. The bonus to us is the equipment that we've already been provided from twenty eleven from the Fire Smart Grant. Is actually making us revenue now in this new program, so we were one of the lucky ones that already had some of the equipment when the program came.
Uh carrying on, so uh search and rescue, you just see the changes there, so that's been rolled off into fire services. Uh carrying on from there, again, training program, so we've just broken that out so that we can uh better track and administer the program. Um and then the only uh other real one to really talk about. Uh is our dangerous goods service, and there's no changes uh there. Other than we did a slight adjustment to revenue, so the actual bottom line impact uh to the town is kind of four thousand dollars less in cost there, just uh based on. Kind of the historical average, again, this one's, sometimes you have it, sometimes you don't. Um most of the time, if this is out of town and we're responding to it, uh we are gonna make a little bit money in our pocket. Uh the only time that it really does cost the town is if we do have an incident in town and we're not able to build the province back, and we do have to meet those costs, so. Some years, this is a very, you know, a a good service to have, and we make a little bit of extra money, and other years, if it's in the town, then definitely it's a cost to us. Our biggest revenue got taken away this year cuz it was at the water plant, that was our big hazmat fall of the year, we didn't wanna build a town of slave back. Just moving from one plot to the other. I wasn't gonna bring that up.
Yeah, it was. We were thankful to have the, there was an incident with a alarm that was an alarm that didn't go off or something like that, yeah. There was no alarm, and thankfully, no one was injured, that was. Caught very quickly, so.
Uh with that, yeah, next page, disaster services, so talked about that, that was just a four thousand dollar line item, it's now in the other budget for uh four thousand dollar increase, we've just. Add, and then the last part there is the Fire Smart Program. Um so this is being kind of rolled into our regular fire services, uh the reason we've kept this kind of back here is both the MD and town. Agreed to uh increase funding for this program uh by twenty-five thousand dollars a year to a contribution each of about two hundred thousand dollars each. Um so that the uh program can continue on, um there is additional grant funding as we uh we see there, so that's applied to offset some of the costs. And so while that pot of money decreases, we s- both entities have slowly increased, so that uh when the final grant funding is. Uh removed, we've absorbed everything into our regular budget.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't have any questions, so if there's any further questions from council, see, I'm not that painful, very straightforward. No, appreciate the presentation there, and uh. Will be after strategic planning, that's when we'll be taking a look at at, you know, the additional asks and and positions in the budget that goes from there, so that's gonna happen sometime lately in January. Just as a heads up for the. For the rest of the process here. Counselor Hughes, uh motion to accept the fire services budget discussions as information. Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Call to question those in favor. And that one is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roland, what's next?
So if I may, uh we're just gonna throw another curveball at you. Just to kind of carry on, I'd just like to throw in community enforcement, um it's pretty status quo.
Page.
And just carry on, it is page sixty-eight.
Okay, that's fine.
Uh so community enforcement, uh basically we have two kind of services provided here, uh we've got the uh by-law enforcement and animal control. Um currently, we have uh one FTE in the by-law enforcement, which is our peace officer. Um he's split in these two cost centers, I believe it's eighty-five in the uh by-law enforcement, and twenty-five percent of his costs go to animal enforcement. Just based on kind of his duties, um also within our intermunicipal agreements. Uh the MD does uh chip in for the animal control uh portion, uh cuz we do provide animal control uh out in the NB here. When we have to house a dog. Or take care of stuff there, uh so they do uh chip into that pot of money. Uh carrying on. On page uh seventy-two, we just kind of get into the uh by-law enforcement details. Again, this is basically uh status quo budgets, uh salaries are just kind of adjusted based on the updated position. Uh previous to this, we had a senior peace officer, uh now just have a regular peace officer. And if he stays long enough, uh we'll get him to that level again. Um but really no additional asks. Under this budget. I've gone through and adjusted small uh line items that uh we're currently underutilized.
So so for the new council, as mentioned, we went from two peace officers to one, we spent most of twenty twenty-four without a peace officer. So if you're looking at the actuals and you see things like PP, when we brought on a new peace officer, obviously getting new clothing. Um and the big one on the revenue side is photo radar, so council decided. Mid-last year to remove photo radar from the town of Slave Lake, so that's where a lot of that revenue and some of the contracted services went. Uh to pay for that and the money that came in, so the big numbers there are directly related to not having staff and the photo radar that's no longer existentially.
Any other questions for that part?
Counselor Gramlick.
Just there's a. The uh animal control, is that a, we bill back per service, or is it just a written agreement that they pay a portion of it?
Yeah, so this one is underneath the intermunicipal agreement, so the uh it's basically, we chip in. The MD pays their portion, which is twenty-one percent.
Well, I'm pretty sure then he spends fifty percent of his time on animal control, not uh the twenty percent.
I mean, depends on year to year, exactly what's going on, right, so. Um and so, or animal control there, we just kind of slightly, uh when I move the salaries around, we do have a part-timer that helps out. Uh with the animals, um so we've just kind of better reflected uh where those wages are allocated.
Yes, we have, we have two ladies that work basically two shifts a day, so we have seven-day coverage. It's pretty rare in the last eighteen months where we've had no animals in the pound, it does happen, and then they get a a one-hour standby just when it's their shift. Um but for the most part, they're there for a little bit in the morning, hour and a half, and then in the afternoon. And then if there's puppies, they go in in the in midday as well, just to check on them, but for the most part, it's twenty, it's seven days a week.
And you may have answered this, and I may have not paid attention to it, contracted services and peace officers, what's under contracted services there?
So um roads permitting, so anybody hauling in the town of Slave Lake has to have a permit, it goes through that. So they do generate a bit of revenue for us as well, but we have to cover that invoice every, every month, it's called road road data, so you call that, the companies call that number. Um co- do you uh sorry, um some of the other small things like um.
Dispatching service.
Yeah.
Software.
Yeah, contracted services just generates a catch-all, so if we're gonna, it's it's one of the larger expenses on.
So they're yellow.
So just curious what's in, what's in the catch-all of contracted services, so I've heard.
We have some cloud storage and.
Cloud storage, software, IT.
Some some of their body cams need storage, um their dispatch service out of Yellowhead, Yellowhead.
Dispatch.
Um. Yellowhead County Fire Department dispatches the peace officers. Uh some of their software in their cars for for ticketing, e-ticketing, um all that stuff is captured under there.
And some of that we do uh do you do back, so we do have that, as Alex alluded to, uh basically nine thousand dollars and a. Budgeted for uh permitting process, which uh we do recover. Uh through the permits, through the uh the waste, way scale there.
Anything else from council for that? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the community enforcement budget, please, Counselor Choba?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the community enforcement services budget detail as information.
Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Call to question those in favor, and that is carried. Next.
Perfect, well, uh just carry on on the page, page seven-six, um so operations, so we've already kind of done the water, but uh. Operations consists of basically two units, you have your public work side and your utility side, so Cody was here for the uh the utility side. And then the public works is our uh. Guys that are taking care of all our streets, snow cleaning, um we do drainage, uh sidewalks. Guys that are taking care of all our streets, snow cleaning, um, we do drainage, uh, sidewalks. Uh, kind of all those things that have to do with roads and uh, general maintenance on that. Um, so with that, we've had a couple of changes uh, within the department there just for. Just for clarity sake, in twenty twenty three, we had eleven F T Es. Um, they also worked twenty eighty, twenty eighty hours. Um, in twenty twenty four, uh, we reduced one and also reduced the hours just to see the impact. We basically uh, have reduced. But one point six F T Es in the department over the last four years. Um, however, there uh, have done a good job. Uh, with the, with the reduction in hours. Uh, as for the budget, if we just want to jump down to page eighty two. Um, so operations administration, so all the wages and wage adjustments here. Again, this is just a reallocation that I alluded to. Basically move the director uh, out of all the uh, all the other cost centers, it's a sixty percent. A budgeted, budgeted for under here and forty percent underwater, since both department. Uh, as for the asks, uh, internet services. Um, slightly adjusted this one. I'm hoping um, that additional ask of twenty one hundred might not have to go through in January. Uh, we're just working with tell us on some backend things. However, we're, um, the overall budget increase to seventy five hundred is reflective. Uh, that we did get fiber optics finally over at the shop as well. Um, so. Uh, that can, that services, that's what we needed over there. As for uh, everything else, there's just kind of small tweaks here. Uh, telephone and security lines. Uh, again, we're working through there. That's just reflective. Of uh, the current services that we have over there. There's a couple of lines and then uh, with that, we brought a. Motion to council or report to council here, uh, just to add a couple of extra security cameras. Um, with a couple of additional costs there that, that's reflective of that, just to beef up the security at the shop because it does seem to be. Uh, every other year, the target of theft and vandalism. Um, radio licensing, um, so this is for the radios. This is what we have to pay for the federal government. It's just reflective of the uh. Processment for the uh, radio licensing in twenty twenty six, uh, for the radios that they do use. And that was really it. Uh, the office supplies here, so you'll see an adjustment here. I've just reallocated it from the shop. Uh, to. Office admin makes a little bit more sense. Uh, so that's just an internal allocation, no real additional budget asked.
What's an equipment rental for administration?
Is that equipment rental?
Photocopier?
For administration is a photocopier, yeah. Photocopier, uh. Photocopier, uh, lease and the uh, charges.
Hey, continue on to equipment detail.
Uh, carrying on on page eighty four, uh, we have fleet services for the equipment budget. Uh, so this budget uh, covers. Uh. The main or the uh, yeah, the maintenance of all of, all of our equipment. So. Um, our graders, our sand trucks, our uh. All of our small uh, uh, fleet vehicles like our forwards and our town van and all of that, that's all run through here. Um, so the s- uh, salaries on here are reflective of the mechanic. And a little bit of uh, the supervisor. Um, not a whole lot of asks on here. Uh, we've updated the freight and postage based on uh, the updated fees uh, that we've got. And we've adjusted uh, slightly the contracted repairs and maintenance.
So what's the difference between contracted services? What's in contracted repairs and maintenance? So what's a contract?
Repairs and maintenance, you can just think of it as repairs and maintenance. That's repairs and maintenance. We have contracted it again. So we have one mechanic that works over there. He can provide. Most of the smaller services, sometimes when there's a bigger ticket, bigger ticket item on, say a grader, uh, we do have to send that to. Uh, whatever supplier we have at the time. So if it's brand or John Deere, whatever vendor we have, whatever piece of equipment that has to go back to. To them uh, to fix, but uh, you know, it's. Uh, we can do most of our light duty stuff in-house. It's just a bigger ticket items on that. Uh, contracted services uh, over there. Is our uh, G P S uh, tracking for the fleet. So it's a fairly bigger uh, program, but there, that includes G, we have G P S tracking on basically every vehicle. So. Uh, we kind of know where all of our equipment is at any one given time. It also ties into it. Above and beyond the uh, G P S tracking. It also is our uh, equipment and maintenance. Uh, tracking software. So um, all of the trucks, when they get fixed, it gets entered in the program when they got fixed, what got fixed. Um, and that all has to be reported to the province.
Counsel Bowes.
Odd question. Salaries and overtime are going down. Benefits went up.
Yeah, so this again, this is, uh, there's a, uh, overall on, on some of these codes when benefits are going up. Uh, I adjusted that, but there's at the end of the day on this one, uh, the overall benefits for that one did go up, but there's slight. Position adjustments that came out of here. Again, the director was, because we have kind of a working director. Uh, previously to this, he was allocated within each of these uh, cost centers.
I'm gonna pop back in here. So ground engaging parts. So that was a budget alignment we cut previously. Uh, and now, so it was, went to twenty seven thousand and now year to date is sixteen.
Yeah, so ground engaging parts. Now that I know, um, so this are, there is other items, but the bigger ticket items on ground engaging parts are your greater blades. That's the, one of the biggest ticket items. And so you'll see, right? So we haven't, now that we're really plowing.
Okay.
Snow. Um, you'll be getting, well.
Okay, that's what I was curious was, is in the two months, if.
Yeah.
Some of operation stuff is seasonal. So I was curious if we can expect a ten thousand dollar spend on that.
Yeah. There are some other pieces of equipment, some of the bigger things that use the ground on major parts. I just know the greater. And I know the greater blades are one of those big ticket items that generally uh, we're spending our money on that.
Continue on to shop then.
I'll get you to shop.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, page eighty six.
That's the next one, right? Or did I miss that one?
Pardon?
Did I miss? Uh, shop is next, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, overall here, um. Not a whole lot of changes, other than we've broken up equipment repairs and maintenance and uh, repairs and maintenance. So overall, uh, slight increase of uh, four thousand dollars. Um, and there's a lot of the uh, the shop stuff there. We do have some uh, like smaller equipment. And that's what's covered under the equipment repairs and maintenance. And then uh, we've broken it out so that we can actually separately track our building repairs and maintenance, which is where the majority of most of the costs. Uh, lie within year after year. Uh, for contracted services. Uh, we've kind of updated this to better reflect exactly uh, all of the services that we are, uh, we do have over there. Um, so some of these things include, uh, we have an, we have an electronic gate, uh, which requires an annual inspection. Uh, all of our fire extinguishers over there require annual research. Um, we do have a garbage bin rental over there. Um, the other stuff we have, uh, whether new council knows, there's a salt plume underneath. Uh, the operations yard, um, and that requires annual monitoring. I'm hoping in the next couple of years, we've remedied. Uh, the whole uh, salt underneath the ground. However, until that's done, uh, we do have to pay uh, to get that inspected. Um, we have a hoist, uh, we have two hoists over at the shop, which require annual inspections. Um, a hot seat, which. Not one, I'm not exactly sure what a hot seat is, but that also requires annual inspection. And they're okay. And then we do have uh, the janitorial services over at the shop.
Counsel Grammick.
What uh, what, what kind of falls under materials there?
Materials at the shop. So this is all of our miscellaneous materials, tape, connectors, wire, car wash show, uh, decreasers. Batteries. Um, concrete and asphalt cutoff blades, kind of all the uh, things that you'd require to shop, uh, spill kits. Uh, lifting straps, safety harnesses.
I just noticed the uh, savings in the equipment repair and maintenance is quite. Quite a reduction, like what, uh, how do they? Bring that down so much?
For the equipment repairs and maintenance?
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically bef- prior to this budget, uh. What, 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 what was going on is there was only one repairs and maintenance. We called equipment pairs and maintenance. Um, but really most of the costs in there were for the buildings. So we have a shop and then we have what I'd call a storage shop where all of our equipment is. Um, so one of the bigger costs in twenty four there, we had a couple of B, uh, we had A B door. Uh, that basically broke, um, that we had to, to repair. So. Uh, just to better go forward on our new programs that we're kind of building up here is we've just separated exactly what's building so that we can better capture that and we have a better idea. Where, where we're actually spending.
There's a few line items I have questions on that we've gone over. So travel and training. So it's only fifteen hundred dollars I know, but we have continuously low spend here. So one fifty nine, seven thirty seven, one thirty three for this year to date. So. Do we need?
I would say.
What are we doing here?
Every year over year and I believe, I, because I believe we set it off uh, somewhere else as well. So. Um, the guys do go for training uh, when needed on. They're wrong. For their class three or the greater stuff or that. And so there's different levels uh, of training needed. And so it varies here to here.
There was a, an invoice on the twentieth of November for thirteen hundred dollars.
Okay, so we are using it. I just went on, when I see year to date, that's why I have that question there. Counsel Grammick, do you have a question?
Say it's probably like, you gotta get your forklift certificate, whatever it is, isn't it?
Yeah.
I just like to make sure they're used. So it's travel, except obviously all the categories are super big. Uh, freight and postage, year to date, three thousand, three fifty two, we're budgeting ninety five hundred. I know we've had some freight and postage discussions last year of things actually being booked to the right cost category. Are we expecting? Another significant amount in front, like are we expecting six grand in the next two months of freight and postage? Or is this one that can move down?
Uh, yeah, depending on what they're purchasing, right? So they do have a couple of other orders out, so. Again, year over year in twenty twenty four, right, we spent twelve at the end of the day. So again, this one's kind of, when we're buying more stuff, uh, generally, you know, we go over. We did reduce it in twenty twenty.
No, I was just curious to make sure it's, if there's other things coming in.
When they, they've done, uh. That they're checking and, and reallocating.
Okay, and we're adding to telephone?
Pardon?
We've got an addition to telephone, twenty one sixty.
Oh, so in years that's on there, I've now wiped that out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That service is gone.
What? So the also now equipment rental, we got fifteen hundred in there. What would we in previous years rent?
You're in the shop?
Yeah. Because I've got equipment rental fifteen hundred. It's not a lot, but I'm just curious.
See, previous years, I believe that is where I have been. Been there in the. I think I had the photocopyer. Now we have, all we are, all we're reflect, oh no, sorry, my bad. Um, so equipment rentals are. Both shops, uh, man lifts, large tools and. Uh, a boom. So they don't always need it, um, but when they do. Do require those lifts, uh, they bring that in. Um, but they had spent more in previous years, however, just noticed, uh, you know, year after year. Uh, they haven't needed as much, so uh, we've reduced that down.
Okay, yeah.
Allows them, they don't need it every year, but they do require it, yeah, in some years there when they need to reach. Whatever it is, they reach over there.
Any further questions on the shop detail? I don't see anything, so you can move to. Gravel Streets, Alex.
Um, just, just for your information, there's still eight um, budgets. Did you want to finish those next week? Um, and get on to the rest of the agenda? Because we still have a bit of an agenda to get ahead of us today.
Uh, weekend. So what's coming next week is community services? Take a look at that.
With the add-on, it should be similar tonight or a little bit less.
Okay, that's fine with, we can do that. Uh, we can put a pause in here on budget discussions. And I will, then we could go with the rest of the agenda. Well, we can accept, we'll accept department to department, so we can accept up to gravel streets.
Sure.
Counsel Grammick.
I'll make a motion to accept uh, the report up to gravel streets as information.
Quick question to council, uh, would you, at this point, before we jump into the rest of the report, would everyone like a brief recess or do you want to power through? We're okay? Continue? Just check.
I'll go to the bathroom.
Okay, let's take five.
Let's, I got a motion on the table.
Motion on the floor, sorry. Question those in favor. Sorry, got distracted there for a moment. Where are we at? Uh, yeah, brief recess, please.
Please.
Welcome back. We'll move right along into the C O update. Alex, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, so for the, uh, we'll start with planning the development, um, throughout the month of November. They addressed several minor enforcement matters, waited a small number of outstanding development permits, uh, mostly on a case by case basis. Uh, as, as everybody's been made aware, in twenty twenty five, the municipal development plan and the land use bylaw rewrite projects were completed. After the la, sorry, over the last four months, um, staff observed a positive response from the public um, regarding the new land use bylaw and its updated regulation. So it's been over, it's been an overwhelmingly positive, um, uh, communication with the department. And they are continuing work on updating the G I S system to align, to align with the new land use, um, district map. For human resources, we do have a couple of job postings, um, there are one job posting, sorry, at the M R C. Uh, recently the W M S was completed organizational wide with the new updates for this year. Uh, and they're currently reviewing some policies, health and safety, um, Alberta occupational health and safety is doing a, um, across the province doing inspections of sites. So they came and did our, our water plant with no issues and they're coming back in January to either do utilities or the fire hall. And a big feather in our cap for our organization, uh, recently our external audit was audit was completed with a pass of ninety two percent. So for staff, what this means is we don't have to do interviews and and things like that for the next two years. We just have to submit a report. So you have to get ninety percent in order to do that. And that was the first time that we were able to accomplish that. So kudos to our, uh, all of our team, but especially our, our health and safety department. For projects, uh, it is kind of the wrap up of the season, um, working on next year's capital budget with all the departments. Um, there is, if anybody's noticed over in Shutter Park, there is, uh, some echoes working on some right of ways that they've been planning on for a while. And they're working with, uh, um, the contractor to finish up the water plant demolition. So that water plant is in its final stages. The fire departments, um, they had four fire preventions, um, presentations in schools as well as the senior homes in slave lake. Uh, a, again, as a shout out to our Movember team, the, they raised over twenty eight thousand dollars in the month. Um, to put that in perspective, there was about twelve members on the team. They beat out Toronto and all of the big departments. Toronto has nine thousand firefighters. So um, we're going to ask Mayor Ward to reach out to their mayor next year and challenge him to fly our flag if we beat him. Uh, and their fire department to wear their T-shirts for one day. So we're going to work on that. Uh, it's been suggested and I think our mayor is definitely on board to do that. Uh, calls to date.
Hold on, Counselor Gammel.
Do we get to go per capita though? When we actually officially reach out to challenge or?
We beat them per capita by they, they came in under us. And then we had twelve members and they have a.
Per capita already.
Yeah.
Okay, good, good. Cause if we challenge them.
The team for fire services was tops in the, in the, in the country, out of all those other departments.
Nice. Thank you.
Excellent work.
So, uh, calls to date as of November third, uh, sorry, of December third were five hundred and sixty three. As mentioned before, this is trending down. They're trending to about a hundred calls less. No real rhyme or reason for that. Um, but if, if you've looked at the stats for the last ten years, a little slower year is not a bad thing. Um, November responses were forty five. So again, about ten less than previous years, um. Protective services, oh, sorry, they're, they're in November, they were at a hundred and nine members. Um, across the board, including search and rescue enforcement services, um, continuing school zones. Uh, this month, um, as everybody has seen, our snow removal has been, um, is going hard. So we're starting residential and enforcement services is gonna, um, assist with calling car, calling people that own cars that are parked on the streets for trying to clean and hopefully get them to move them. So that's going to be starting here right away. Um, through our complaint line, he handled sixteen complaints or violations as well as his ongoing enforcement, um, of the other things that he works on. Uh, spending a lot of time with, um, our unhoused and, and on a first name basis with most of them now, uh, operations. Um, they were preparing for sanding and, and snowing, snow plowing, uh, finishing up a bit of road work. Doing some sign maintenance, um, inventorying all our signs. Uh, we did notice that there's a few that need to be updated. So they're working on all of that. Um, and working on their year end environmental reporting, um, from Alberta Environment and Parks. That is the update that I have for you tonight.
Okay. Any questions, comments from council? Counselor Choba?
I'd like to move to accept the C O update as information.
There's a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Call the question those in favor. And that one is carried. Next, we have our management task list.
So again, as the only thing that is on there right now is the procedural bylaw, which we are, um, planning, preparing to bring forward in the new year, um, in early forward.
Sir Hughes.
A motion to, oh, did you have a question?
Well, just that says with stipulation that resign at their own discretion, but I thought that part of the motion that we made was also that if we don't like what the deputy Mary's doing, we can also get rid of it.
That will be built into the.
In the detail.
That was just a brief overview of the.
Okay. That's a good clarification.
That'll be part of the procedural bylaw.
Yeah, the, the full detail. No, that's a good clarification on that.
I thought you were, yeah, that's true. Um, okay. Well, with that in mind, oh, do you have a rebuttal? Okay, I was just gonna move to accept the task list as information.
Okay, any further discussion? Call the question those in favor. And that one is carried. Okay, question period.
Counselor Hughes. Um, Alex, uh, today's topic in budgets, uh, photo radar reminded me that I was wanting to follow up with you. Um, were you able to make any headway on the electronic signs on the highway, those speed signs? I know it was quite the, quite the thing to look into. Just wondering if you might have an update on that.
Yeah, so we reached out to the manufacturer. Um, we were able to find the things in the old peace officer's office. You have to go and sit within about three hundred feet of the signs and, and, um, but we also need to look at some batteries. So we're prepared. We just need the weather to cooperate. So it's probably going to be a a bit more of a spring thing, but we, we have got passwords and, and documentation and, and some of the fobs that connect to the laptops. So we're a bit more prepared for when it finally does.
Okay, so hopefully sometime this spring we'll have those back up.
Yeah, it's, it's all, it's sitting on my desk. So it doesn't get forgotten as soon as it warms up a bit and we can go park close to the signs. So we're not a traffic hazard. We will go out and start looking at them.
Okay, would you like me to make an official motion for that?
Sure, if you'd like to add it to the management task list, um, it is on the top of my desk though. So it's up to you. If you choose to add it, it'll just get followed up.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Okay. Then we can move forward into our committee minutes. Uh, first up, we have tri council health. Who is? Counselor Bows.
So, uh, went to my first tri council health committee meeting last week. So basically the discussion was is that hiring physicians is still a challenge. We currently have four vacancies and their recruitment plans are ongoing. November stats at our clinic, there was four thousand, one hundred and eighteen visits. Three hundred and forty nine of those were phone appointments. One thousand, four hundred and twenty one of them are what they call the gold standard, which is you phone in and you get an appointment on the same day. The, right now, the average wait for an appointment is between four and twenty eight days. And that basically depends on the product practitioner. And with our clinic, there's seven, over seven thousand patients at our clinic. Twenty seven hundred are people who don't have any specific providers of care. And we did actually, it was asked whether these were more young people, more old people, and there didn't seem to be much of a variation on where those people lie. Um, the paramedics are currently staffed at about eighty percent, but they're also building a casual pool. They have actually started a pilot project, a cadet program. Right now they have one person in slave lake, one person in Wabaskot. And basically what they're doing is taking people from the community, training them up, getting them into first aid, a year long process. And then you would have somebody who's basically kind of a trained E M R in your community. It is a pilot project, so they're currently kind of figuring out how they're going through this. At the hospital, we've got three new grad R Ns. They are also doing a pilot project wanting to mentor them and hoping that then they'll remain in our community. Um, at this point, we utilize the northern region to cover any staff. And as well, we are still in the situation in slave lake where low risk deliveries only are happening here. And the last one is that our PAP is hosting something called let's go rule at the schools. So they're going to be doing this in the spring, hoping for about twenty to forty kids. And what they're going to be doing is taking grade ten and elevens through different stations at the hospital and showing them the different jobs available in healthcare, being it in the lab, X-ray, um, all over the place so that these can give these kids an idea if they're interested in it or not. And that's it.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, next up is our lesser slave lake regional housing authority. Um, so for that, I guess that's me. A couple of quick things. We had our organizational meeting, Brad Pearson from M D one twenty four was elected as the chair and myself was elected as the vice chair. It's been about the same for about the last three years. Um, during the regular meeting, we approved the purchase of, um, monthly data cloud security and backup so that we can reduce our, uh, insurance, our cyber insurance costs. Uh, quick update on the waitlist. Our waitlist continues to climb. Um, biggest jump continues to be with our seniors. Um, lodge and self-contained. So overall, the waitlist went from seventy five to eighty between September to October. Senior self-contained, uh, jumped from twenty three to twenty seven and social housing then went from fifty two to fifty three. There's some properties that are being, um, repaired right now. So that will help on the social housing side, but we are at full capacity in the lodge and senior self-contained. Those ones have very quick, very quick turnover there. And we also, um, were presented with the initial draft budgets for the lodge and provincial units, and those are to come back in December for review. With some changes that were discussed. Okay, we'll move along to watershed. Sorry, that was me.
Uh, thank you. Um, as a result of the municipal election and following committee appointments, the lesser slave watershed council, um, said farewell to three municipal directors and welcomed three new appointments. Um, they're also hiring a watershed outreach coordinator. They're in the interview stage, so they're looking to onboard someone in the new year. Uh, they're advertising for a summer intern position from May to September. The hope is to give a local student here the opportunity. Uh, watershed resiliency program has funds available for partnership uh, on projects that will improve or protect shorelines, repairing repairing areas and wetlands. Um, the agricultural funding workshop posted in collaboration with Big Lakes County and M D L S R. Um, happened on November nineteenth and twentieth, and the focus was on sharing information about funding opportunities available to agricultural producers to implement best practice. Um, twenty twenty five monitoring results, uh, reports for our tributary sampling program, which is now in year nine and new, um, lesser slave lake bentic invertebrate sampling programs will be released in the new year. Um, L S W C staff will be collecting under ice water samples and measurements in January, February and March of twenty twenty six at sites off the shore of Jussard and Asenu as part of a provincial wide lake monitoring program coordinated by Alberta Lake Management Society. Uh, December tenth from twelve to one P M, the watershed and W packs one oh one for municipal. Uh December tenth from twelve to one P M, the watershed and W PAX one oh one for municipal municipal councillors is um the conference is gonna be happening tomorrow. Um and it basically just gives an overview of what watershed management, who W PAX are, and what they do and how it relates to municipal businesses. Um Family Day Kids Cat Catch Ice Fishing Event is February fourteen, twenty twenty-six. There's status to be determined due to lack of staffing capacity. Volunteers are required to take on much of the organization of this event, so if you're looking to volunteer, that'll be great. Uh stewardship in action northern workshop is happening January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-six at the Homroy Hotel in Grand Prairie. Uh tickets are available online. And
Yeah, that's it.
Fantastic. Um next up is the Legacy Corporation meeting. So we met yesterday. Um we approved the twenty twenty-five budget as that we're doing some document cleanup. The twenty twenty-six budget was brought forth from administration and some changes were notified to align expenses with actuals. We also motioned for a capital plan and policy review to be brought back each meeting um just so that the policies stay current, so there'll be a motion to bring back two to five policies um for review. We also uh reviewed a new policy for allocation of use of facility as well as the rate policy. Those are gonna be going back for changes and brought back at the next meeting. And a note that we are also looking, still looking for a community member um to sit on that board and that those are up on the Town of Slave Lake website as well. Housing is too. That one was also mine. Um going to Protective Services, all of us were there. Um so we actually normally Protective Services has two committee members. This time, we had all of council sit um just for the first Protective Services meeting where we have all of our emergency services and related departments come and meet and discuss any updates that are that are going on. Right now, everything's fairly status quo. Um each each community department has different things going on. Uh there was an interesting update from Alberta wildfire. Um we again reiterated that it doesn't matter the amount of snow um on the fire season. It is the amount of rain in in the spring um and that there are significant underground fires still burning um and that that will be causing some some work to be done over over the winter months. So some of the large complexes still uh still are going there. Um and then anything else from Protective Services on that? I'm just trying to, I didn't have my notes in front of me. Alex, anything, counsel? Okay. And then waste, which was three hours ago. Andrew, do you want to provide the update or should I? Okay. So that is going to be me again. Um okay, so two seconds, I just have to get back to this. So we did a review for management. It was pretty simple. There was a closed session um regarding some contract negotiations. And then we were going to review the budgets. Um we just took a look at an interim budget being uh prepared for three months um with the remainder to be reviewed at a future meeting. So that one was pretty um nothing eventful, uh looking like a good year based on interim numbers um with regards to cost savings as well as increased revenue pricing, uh particularly with steel. And that would be it for for waste. Okay, yes, Counselor Choba?
Um just to add to that, um Brad from the M D was uh elected as chair of the Waste Management and uh our mayor was elected as the deputy chair.
Thank you for the add on that, Counselor Gramlich.
Motion to accept the committee reports as information.
Motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Call to question those in favor. And that one is carried. Um any update for state of the lake community wise, anyone? All I have to say is that it's budget season and every single committee we're on is in budget right now, so if every council here is looking a little tired, it is because every single one is in budget. Counselor Bows?
Actually, just it was put out today that if uh you know, everybody gets their pictures taken with Santa. How about you get your picture taken with the Grinch at the M R T M R C this Saturday?
Yes, and that is with our um youth youth advisory committee.
Advisory committee, yes.
There we go. Thank you, administration, for the name of that. I was gonna say student council, but that doesn't work. Counselor Williams?
I would like to make a motion to adjure.
Thank you. Close. So make a motion to go into closed.
Go to closed.
There we go. That was the addition. Uh any further discussion? Call to question those in favor. And that is carried. Close session, please. Counselor Gramlich?